Started, roll call please. Ben Martinson.
Present.
Kiri Hildebrandt, I am here. Leo Thomas Guard.
Yep.
John Davic.
Here.
Kathy McGrath.
Here.
Everyone's here. First item is report from student representatives, student and staff recognition.
So we have two different items this evening. We'll start with the student council report.
Okay. So, my name is Jade Martin. I'm a senior. I'm involved in everything within school. And my future plans, I'm going to be attending Upper Iowa University next year. So I'll be reporting the girls and boys basketball. Boys have been doing pretty good this year. Their overall record is nine and 10, four and five in conference. They recently won a big game against Pittsville last Friday. And their next game will be this coming Friday, the 15th, at home versus Pacheli. Girls' basketball on their hands have been doing pretty well also, with 10 and 9 overall, eight and three in conference, tied for second right now. Coming up, a very huge win against Wildrose, only winning by four, 65-61. And also, our next game is tomorrow at Pacheli.
My name is Ally Delasky, and I'm in 10th grade. Next Saturday, February 23rd, the senior class is throwing semi-formal dance for the high school students.
Okay. My name's Taylor Martin, and I'm a freshman. In March, we have the Bud Drive, which is the fifth, and then, March 19th, we have the traditional concert for band and choir at seven.
Right. Any questions?
Just on a note, we're moving the concert to the big gym because of the issues with space. We've started to experience in the toward the Alexander, so we're just going to try this out and see how it works. And we'll see how it works this time around, otherwise, we might have to go back to the drawing board. And that's kind of a good problem to have us, that many people coming to the concerts, so. The second group I would like to recognize tonight for students is our Skills USA group. And I'll let Mr. Burton kind of lead it from there.
Good. So, the Wisconsin State Superintendent made a proclamation as for February 3rd through the 9th being Skills USA Week. Since that was last week, and we didn't have a school board meeting then, we decided to do it this week. So, I brought one of my student representatives, Jude Gudmundsen, and he'll just talk about a little bit what we're doing.
Hello, my name is Jude Gudmundsen. I'm Vice President of Skills USA. In this past year, we've gone apple picking for the holiday meal, along with Christmas cards and ornaments for Edgewater or St. Home, and helped students with the resume writing. For the future, or the end of spring to end it off, we're hoping to go apply in state competitions and do more spring community service.
The Skills USA group that works in our, works in conjunction with our technology education department. And maybe just what are a couple of different things that students can compete in?
It can be anything from cosmetology to medical, now terminology is a new contest this year, to construction or masonry, pretty much any trade that would be denoted a skilled trade. So there's about 155 different competitions at the state level that the students can compete in.
How many students are going to?
We're unsure of that right now. However, we have 14 registered members as of right now. And we're hoping approximately six to eight students possibly go into the current state competition at the end of April.
Do they want to compete in?
We have one student that's looking at medical terminology, and then, a few other students in various other areas. I know Jade, she's a Skills USA member. She was kind of eyeballing a couple contests. Which one were you looking at?
Job interview. So.
Well, thank you for your reports, and you're free to leave if you'd like.
Congratulations, I think a thousand, a thousand points for Jade, and then, did Kyler have a, didn't she have something too? Then we have to 5000 points?
Caitlin.
Caitlin.
Good job on that.
I voted.
All right, next item is president's report. All board members are in attendance. Our next board meeting is March 13th. Moving on to administrative reports. First one, report on referendum information.
I'm just going to take a couple of minutes and show you a little bit of what we've got available to the public. For information regarding the referendum, hopefully that's going to turn on. Yep. Take just a moment. So, in terms of helping the community understand what the referendum is all about, we have created a tab on our website that provides some of the base information on the referendum. And we're also using our Facebook account to post information about the referendum. And again, it's informational. We don't ask people to, you know, support that. In the same, you know, we're not asking people to go out and vote yes. We're just providing the information that they can use to make up their mind however they see fit. Under this particular tab, we've got, the very first thing we've got out there is our ballot language. And this comes off of the language that we submitted to the county for, for the election. This is new. There is an informational video. Runs about three and a half minutes or so in length. We don't have to watch it this evening. I prefer not to be, so I don't need to see myself up there.
You did a good job.
This is the, and you may see some of this information repeated. This is just a basic message on the referendum and why we're at this point in looking at doing a referendum. And then, we've got probably my favorite page. It's the property tax impact page. Where we talked about, you know, what impact would a $600,000 referendum on the taxpayers be next, next year? And then, we talked about where our mill rates have been, where they would be projected to be. And I guess, one item that was asked, and I'll, because this was asked as part of our Facebook posting that we did, just putting this information, starting to put this out here. One question was certainly about the tax rate and what would happen. So, and I know the board has heard this many times, and probably many in the audience have heard it before too. But what would ultimately happen to our tax rate next year with a $600,000 referendum? It seems kind of counterintuitive, but the projection at the moment is that our tax rate would actually be less next year. There's a couple of reasons for that. One is, our property values have been rising in the district. When the property values rise, that spreads the tax out across more value. So, it actually, as people's land at home becomes worth more, that tax rate can actually be less per thousand dollars. The other piece is, we dropped off our energy efficiency projects, which were running the district anywhere. The smallest project was about $195,000, the biggest project $510,000. Last year, $395,000, that we will not be doing and will not be taxing for. So when we're not taxing for that, that comes off of that tax burden. So, those things kind of in conjunction, cause the effect for, at least projecting out next year, a lower tax rate by six cents on the thousand. So, you know, so we're talking, it's not a huge decrease, but a small decrease in the tax rate. And as you can see, our mill rate has been up at one point, going back to 2014 and 15. And then, now is down. And then, just a graph that, that we built, because I think the other piece of the story here is what's happened with our enrollment. Our enrollment has risen. And unfortunately, the way the state is funded at the moment, we're actually receiving less money than when we did when we had less students. So, in terms of our, of our overall ability to go for revenue cap dollars. You know, we actually have less revenue cap dollars today than when we had fewer students. Now, that over time will change, but, you know, the piece that we've certainly discussed at the board meetings is, we're in a deficit situation because we've been out having to hire and staff up and fill classrooms that, four and five years ago, we were closing down and not using. So, and as we have less revenue to do that with, we've ended up in a, in a bit of a bind. And this is not uncommon, in terms of districts seeing referendums, as we've talked about. More and more districts are seeing that. Ours is kind of unique, in the sense that ours is a factor of rapidly increasing enrollment. So, over the last couple of years. Anyways, I had to talk a little more on that page. It's probably my favorite page on this, so that's why I wanted to talk about that. But my goal today, just really show you where some of this basic information is. Obviously, the where can I learn more page. We will be doing Facebook posts, putting information out specifically on, typically on Sundays and Thursdays, I'm not going to promise. It's always going to be every Sunday and Thursday between now and when the election happens, but it'll be pretty consistent that it is. We also will be putting out our special edition of the newsletter. It will have pretty much the information you see here will be in that newsletter, because we know not everybody visits our website. As well as, probably something that, something we'll be discussing later in terms of getting information out is, when would the board like to do an informational meeting? And it'd be just a general public meeting to provide, again, information out there to the public. You know, and answer a lot of those questions that are out there. You know, one of the questions, you know, is, you know, we have invested into some of those energy efficiency projects and whatnot over the past several years, you know, why is maintenance still a concern? Well, maintenance is number one, a continuous concern, but number two, that was, you know, very, a very narrow window of things that we could do with that money. It had to be energy related, and things, things of that nature become somewhat limited in scope. We could deal with electrical projects, heating and cooling projects, and projects to bolster the efficiency of our buildings, put more insulation in and do those kinds of things, use less energy, but, you know, that doesn't, that doesn't fix a floor. You know, that doesn't fix other things, doors that are broken and other things, so, you know, those are some of the things we couldn't do with that. The other piece that we'll put out there informational, working with the Facebook side, considering doing a Facebook Live question and answer session. So, we would have an informational meeting where we certainly could have the public come in and do questions and answers. Other piece that would be doing that as well on a Facebook Live format, where people could submit questions and then, using that medium to answer those. Some other districts have done that and done it really well, and so we're looking at setting that up as well. So, anyways, that's, that's kind of the information that we're putting out there, and I wanted to let the board know. And I, you know, I've tried to give you some of those updates, but I wanted to make sure that you saw that and saw where that information is. Any questions on that piece?
That's good.
Our next report is on elementary activity.
The first thing I declared report that we were excited about at the elementary and middle school was Opera for the Young. And Opera for the Young is a group that is, goes across the United States, and they present interactive opera performances since the 1970s. And they have the students in the roles in the chorus, so the kids practice the music so they know the opera. It's all in English. They don't do any like Italian, you know, that kind of thing. This one is called, was called like Superstorm or something like that. And their productions are fully staged with professionals, and it happened to fall on a snow day. So, we are still going to do it. We're having our fifth graders. They're going to be part of our lead parts. Mrs. Paul Vermaeker had them all set up, so they still know, hopefully will remember their parts and the music, they'll review it. But they were gracious enough to say they were going to come back in April. So, we will be doing Opera for the Young. It's just, it's just on hold right now. Another thing we've been continuing to do with our school families is our kindness theme for this year. If you notice, we have our kindness bulletin board that changes monthly over when you first walk in. We've also been working on zones of regulation with the kids. If you saw the newsletter that kind of explained that, I talked about it last month as well. So we have our bulletin board over there with our staff members showing each of the emotions. So, take a look at that on your way out, because it's quite entertaining. And so, with, along with that, we're using that as part of our school families, which we also started last year, where we have kids from kindergarten through fourth grade grouped off into a school family. And that's the group they stay with every year, I mean, every time we meet, every month, for the entire year. And so that way, when they come to, when we come to do an all-school activity, they sit in their school families, and then, when they go to do the activity, they go with that same group. So then, the kindergartners get to know some of those fourth graders, kind of build that relationship throughout the school year. So we're continuing to do that along with the kindness thing. And then, the final thing is our spaghetti dinner. People hosted a spaghetti dinner here, and they had 78 people in attendance. So it was very good turnout, and very well, you know, very well attended, and I think everyone had a good time. So that will probably be another future event, in addition to the movie nights and all the other things that people does at our schools, so. And then finally, 4K, 5K registration. We're getting those in, and hoping we have a good, you know, turnout for that. And again, we're advertising on our website and Facebook page, so people know what they need to do. We've gotten a lot of phone calls about how exactly to register kids, so that's about it.
Thank you very much. Next item is our annual audit report.
Tonight, we have Amber Danielsky from Shank, and she's going to give the report. I will be looking at the management communications document as the staple one. Not much of this changed this year. You'll, I don't know if you're all aware, but as of 1-1, Shank merged in with Clifton-Larson-Ale. So, next year, when I come in and present this report, they'll see some different letterhead and some different, just different colors and different, a little bit different format, probably a little bit, just as we purged to be one firm as that. But, to go through the letter, I'll just go through some of the pages briefly, and then focus more on some of the financial balances and some recommendations and new accounting rules that are going to be going into effect for you to be aware of going into the future. Starting at page one, we talk about our responsibilities under the audit, and what the district's responsibilities are under the financial statements. We've given opinion on those financial statements, and our opinion said that, you know, that those financial statements that we looked at represented fairly, which is a clean opinion, which is what the district strives for. That full opinion is in the bound document, starting on page one in that document. And you can read through it, but the one paragraph that'll give you all the information you need says that, the opinion one says that we thought everything presented fairly. Then on page two, as part of the audit, we look at internal controls. We don't give an opinion on internal controls, but we do look at them to make, to design our audit test. And if we see some weaknesses or some potential areas where you could do better on, we point them out here and in a few pages further back in this report. The first two in the middle of the page, finding 2018-001, segregation duties, and finding 2018-002, preparation of the report, those are very common deficiencies that the district has. There are a lot of the small districts, some of the bigger districts have it. In the smaller districts, segregation duties is harder, because you only have one person handling all ends of the transaction. And whenever possible, you want to break those up. The preparation of the financial report, other than the opinion in that bound document, everything else in that document is the responsibility of the district to prepare. Well, due to not having enough people, usually the district outsources in contracts with their audit firm to prepare that. And because it's not prepared internally, we have to report that there's an deficiency on there. And that's one of the reasons I come to present this at this time, because then if you have questions on those documents, you can ask me to explain some of those footnotes, some of the numbers in there, and just open up that line of communication on that. Very common deficiencies, but something to just always be aware of. The district management always has to provide a response as to how they're going to address those findings, and DPI does look at them. So, it is something that not just the board member looks at, but that DPI looks at as a whole, since they're giving you the granting money and state aids and federal funds to run some of our programs. On top of page three, there are two more findings, and you'll see that they're kind of relatively similar. The first one is segregation duties grant management, and that's similar to the other segregation duties one, but this is focused more on just your federal and state grant claims. When you get that money, that there's just some segregation duties that there's not enough people handling all the transactions, even on the grant side, to split it up. And then, financial reporting for the state awards. There's extra schedules required by DPI that list out all your federal funds that you got this year, and all the state awards that you got this year. And those schedules we prepare again as part of the audit contract, but would be the responsibility of the district to prepare, if it wasn't us preparing. Any questions on those? They're all the same from the prior years. In the middle of page three, it talks about accounting practices, and I just want to point out that there was one new accounting rule that went into effect for the financial statements, and it had to do with your other post-employment benefits liability. The allowing retired employees to stay on the group health plan and contribute part of that, those premiums towards, towards their full premium. That liability, that future benefit, the accounting rules changed on that. So if you do look through the financial statements, you'll see that some of those footnote changed, and there's new schedules in there as well. They're trying to give more information to help you understand really what is the long-term liability for offering these benefits. Not mu, it didn't change significantly from the year past, it's sort of the dollar amount, but it's, they tried getting everybody on the same playing field, where they'll, everybody, some people were using this type of method to accrue, and some people were using this type of method, and they want everybody on the same playing field, so it was a little more easy to judge and compare different things, especially from a bond rating agency perspective. So I just want to point that out, in case you do look at those footnotes and see something a little different than the years before. Moving then to page six. Page six talks about where your ending fund balance was for the district's three funds, and the governmental funds at the end of 2018. The general fund had unassigned fund balance of $1,600,000, a decrease of $100,000 from the year before. The district planned on a decrease of fund balance. If you look at the budget statement in the bound document, I can't remember the page offhand, but it's fairly, you budgeted to use $104,000. You ended up only using $100,000. So you did do slightly better than what you expected. You had revenues that were under budget, but also some expenditures that were under budget, so that helped offset that. And we'll talk a little bit more about the general fund in a second. The other two special revenue funds are food service and your donations. Food service is up. The revenues from charging for meals plus getting the state aids in. There was an increase in that this year. Your reimbursements just exceeded your expenditures in 2018. And donation expenditures had an ending fund balance of $32,000. This amount is funds that were given to the district for specific projects. And there's a full listing in that bound document where it lists, because there could be something for Project Lead the Way. There's various different categories that donors have given the district money for, to spend on. And so, the total governmental fund balances at the end of 2018 was $1,663,000. Any questions on those balances?
I just, I guess if I may add a moment for clarity, and I believe that the board is well aware that that fund balance isn't like an account that has $1.6 million, send it anywhere. It is really what's there on a particular day at a particular time, but that doesn't mean it stays there and isn't used. And this year's budget, also again, because it's in a deficit situation, calls for using fund balance to offset that deficit, so.
Correct. That balance is as of June 30th, it's your cash in your bank accounts minus your summer payrolls, minus your accounts payout, some of the other vendor payables you had at the end of the year, and that's what you're left with.
It's a checking account balance.
Pretty much, yeah, once you get through it. And, you know, one of the reasons we always point out and talk about unassigned fund balance is because you don't get your state aids until now. You don't get your taxes revenue until now, and then, six months from now as well. That you need to have a good checking balance. You need to have a good unassigned fund balance to help you pay for those costs, pay for salaries and other costs in between. So one of the analysis we always do, and that's why we have this graph, is we show you a five-year trend. And you'll see some of the decrease, but like, as, how I mentioned, you've had to use some of that to cover costs. And one thing we always look at is, kind of as an industry benchmark, is how does that compare to, you know, how many months would that get you? You know, if you had to break it down crudely into how many months, what would it get you? And so, you know, we always figure, well, you need at least three to four months, so that's a good 20, 25 percent. And you're actually right within that amount. You're right at the top of that benchmark. Now, the district has analyzed their own cash flow and has set a lower, lower amount of eight percent, or, excuse me, 10 percent. That you want to have 10 percent of next year's expenditures on hand. And so, 10 percent of next, of the 18, 19 budget was $650,000. So when you're at 1.6, you do have that extra cushion to allow for other stuff as well. So you're meeting your own internal policy, but you're also meeting the internal, the external benchmarks that we also look at. And it varies by district. Some districts keep the 10 percent, some districts keep closer to 30 percent. All depends on how the nature of your timing of your expenses fall in. So, it's important just to always keep that in the back of your mind, but understand that that's why we always kind of focus on that. It's the timing of your cash flows makes you need to have maybe a little higher than.
Yeah, this year, the cash flow was problematic.
Exactly.
You know, in October, November.
Exactly. And if it dips too low, that's when you have to get a line of credit from the bank and then do different things, which cause other, other costs to you as well. Because you're paying interest on that and different things, and it just adds up. And so that's on page seven. There's another chart showing the five-year trend of what the percent of that unassigned balance is to total expenditures. And so, like, as you can see, you can see the decrease, but that's because you've had to been using that fund balance to balance the budget. Any questions on the general fund? Then on page eight is just a comments and observations are areas where we think you can just make some improvements on. And the topic that we looked at this year was cash reconciliations, reconciling your bank statements to the accounting system. There were variations this year, or in 2017 and 18, where the reconciliations did net out. They, some months had one balance, some months the other, and we're just recommending that you take another step back and look at that process. It's been worked on, and I know Lisa's working on it. We met this afternoon to kind of see what the progress was on some of this stuff, and so it's a work in progress. But it's important just to keep a focus on that, because as, in order for things to be recorded timely, each had those reconciliations done, which then provides the most up-to-date information to be given to the board to review when you're reviewing the checks being posted and just hash balances and understanding how you're looking compared to budget. Any questions on that? Then, page, page nine and 10, those are some new accounting rules. And these, this is just for informational purposes only, but just kind of giving you a heads up that, the statements again are going to be looking different in a few years. The first one is on leases. When you lease buses, or lease trucks, or lease computers, lease equipment stuff, when you have a long-term lease that's multiple years, the accounting for that is going to change. It's going to have to be shown as a full liability on your financial statements. Where before, when you weren't leasing to own, it never got picked up. You know, so there'll be some new footnotes on that. Now, it's not just impacting just schools, it's impacting all the governments, but it's also impacting businesses, so everybody's going through this. There actually governmental accounting and for-profit accounting are actually kind of lining up on how they want all this recorded. So, everybody's in the same boat, so hopefully all your agreements will get off the information. So, we'll be working with Lisa to make sure all the documentation is gathered in order to implement that standard. It doesn't happen for a few years, but the reason they wanted to let everybody know about it now is to give you time, since some of those agreements do span five years or longer, to give you time to start tracking it now, rather than having to run along the yearbook. It all goes into implementation, make sure you caught it all. The second one is reporting for fiduciary activities. And the reason this one affects the districts is because you have your scholarship funds, which are in the fiduciary account, and you have your student activity funds, which are in the pupil, so all the pupil activity accounts at the elementary school and at the high school. The way that that gets accounted for, there's going to be some slight differences. You'll see some terminology differences, and just varying degrees on, basically recommending another review to make sure that everything that is in those custodial funds, which is the new term, anything that's in student activity, really make sure it is student activity and not actual general district operations. Because if it's, if it's, you know, running through field trips or that kind of stuff from those cuts, it really should be in your general fund and not in your student activity and different things. And what I would be looking And what I'd be looking forward to, and I haven't seen it yet, would be guidance from DPI on how they really want the district to be implementing it. You know, because DPI sets your accounting structures and certain different reporting requirements. I would expect that they're going to be providing some kind of information to the district. That goes into effect actually for this next coming year. So when I'm standing up here next year, you probably will see some new statements, and we'll talk about how that looks different on your statements than. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions. Sounds good. Well, if you, as you look through this stuff, feel free to give me a, send me an email, or Lisa has all my contact information. It's also on the CLA website. You should be able to search for my name and bring up my contact information. And I can explain footnotes or answer any questions on anything we're looking at. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amber.
Next item on the agenda is questions and comments from people in attendance. No one signed up to speak. Well, you don't want to speak again, do you? I figured that. All right, moving on to consent agenda. Seek approval of the minutes of the past meeting, January 9th, 2019. Take a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Number nine, consider approval of financial reports. Are there any gifts?
I'm, well, I will start just with a couple of comments about some of the gifts that we received dedicated toward the Dorothy Alexander Auditorium. We've been working the last couple of years in conjunction with the Alexander Foundation and the Port Edward's Education Foundation to do some improvements. And those improvements, the new stage curtain, the main curtain for the stage, lighting for the stage, and one area we would also like to begin to make improvements on would be the sound system. That facility becomes 100 years old, you know, and, and within a year, and we'd like to have a solid improvement on the sound system and be, through that work, very generously, we've received three gifts. One from, one of $5,000. And this particular gift is from the, from Joanne Lester, CRN Joanne Lester, again for $5,000 toward that sound system. The other, from the Port Edward's, from the Alexander Charitable Trust, $5,000. And the final donation, Leslie Arnt, for $1,000, so a grand total. And these all came through the, through the Alexander Foundation toward the troop beef, and then now used to begin to make improvements on that system, so.
And we have, we have a few others today. We, as you saw, thank you cards today. Last time I had told you that we had received an anonymous donation, well, we've received like three more, so we have another additional $130 that we received and put into the families, helping families. Then we have the music booster has purchased, or will be, have given money to purchase instruments for the band, equalling $2,942 worth of new instruments, two drums, a trombone, and two saxons. And they also purchased shirts for the students for the Opera for the Young. We also, the band department also was donated a flute from Tina Melvin. And we also had a donation from the Port Edward's Baseball Association and the Port Edward's Athletic Booster Club for the fencing at Palin Field.
Great. Lots of good gifts.
Very lucky to get all those wonderful donations and gifts.
All right, with that, take a motion to approve financial reports.
So move.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. There is no unfinished business, so we move on to new business. Consider approval of volunteer head varsity baseball coach, Ben Martinson.
I'm going to step off for this conversation.
So we are going to recommend that Mr. Martinson, on a voluntary basis, granted the head coaching position, that school board members volunteering is a relatively new concept. It's only been in existence for about three years now. I'm trying to remember my Wisconsin hacks. I believe it's Act 92 allows that to happen. However, the conditions of that are, there can be no re-iteration for services, meaning no pay, and that board member would have to recuse themselves, as Mr. Martin has, Martinson has done, by removing himself from the meeting for this discussion. He would also have to recuse himself for any conversation dealing specifically with baseball. It does not preclude him from voting on the general overall school budget and some of those items, but if it's baseball-specific or it's, or it's pulled out and specific to that end of athletics, he'd have to recuse himself. As would Mr. Hillbrand, who coaches, is a volunteer coach in our basketball program. A little different here that I'm asking for the approval, and it's because this is a head coaching position, so I'd ask the board's approval on this.
So we need a motion.
I move to accept Mr. Martinson as a varsity baseball coach.
Voluntary.
As a volunteer basis.
I'll second that. Motion.
All right, the motion in a second. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Say nay. Motion carried.
Give him a moment to step back. And just so you know, the, any savings on salary is, that just gets back absorbed into the general budget at that point, so we can't, with Title IX and some of those pieces out there, we can't just rededicate it into baseball for other purposes. It's just got to, it's got to kind of wash it out on the budget, is really what it's got to do.
Will there be an assistant coach?
We will work on that, so.
You're getting good.
You did.
You've been approved. Ready to go, Ben.
Oh, sorry. What's that meant?
Attention. All right, number 12. Consider approval of State College Now applications, fall of 2019.
So we have three applications. They do, these are from students, and they do meet the requirements to be in the Start College Now program. This is the technical college program. This all used to be covered under youth options, but now there's two programs, one for the university systems and one for the technical college systems. And these students would be able to, in the fall of 2019, attend some classwork at, I believe it's all for mid-state technical college, so.
Correct me if I'm wrong, we didn't have any, any students taking these last year?
Um, last year we did not. This semester you have, you have one in this semester that you had approved back in the fall, so. And these come really early, you know, but this is the high school registration time, but there's a pretty early deadline, and the deadline is March, so that's why we've got to get these done now.
I'm glad that they're taken.
It's a real opportunity.
Advantage of this.
Good sign that we had three students that are taking advantage of that to, of the junk. I would make a motion that we approve the Start College Now applicants.
I'll second it.
And a motion in a second, any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Next item is consider approval of retirement. Ronnie Brumwink.
It is, you know, retirements are always, can be an emotional time, and so, you know, Mrs. Brumwink has given 27 years to the school district, I believe 38 was it, in education. So she's spent a long career in education and has served as our school counselor. At one time, doing, doing that as the pre-K-12 counselor and going between both buildings, still goes between both buildings, but, you know, we've enhanced the counseling the last couple of years. But I would ask your acceptance of this letter requesting retirement.
I move to re, to approve Ronnie's, Brumwink's retirement and thank her for her 27 years of service to our district.
I will second that. Motion in a second? Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Number 14, consider approval of 2019, 2020 Wisconsin School Nutrition Purchasing Cooperative.
Uh, this is something we've done for the past several years. We used to be long to a cooperative that was run through one of the CISA's. It's not our own CISA, so I forget, I believe it was like CISA 4 or 10. However, in the past three years, though, we've been a part of the Wisconsin School Nutrition Purchasing Cooperative, which is cooperative of schools, and we basically leveraged, leveraged the group in terms of purchasing power. It allows us to buy product at a, you know, that reduced rate, the more you buy, the reduce those prices. So I would ask that we continue to be a part of that cooperative.
I see there's quite a few schools that are involved.
Yes. And Lisa, Lisa Moen does attend cooperative meetings, you know, on behalf of the school district, so that we're, you know, we are represented in that.
All right, is there a motion to approve cooperative?
So move.
Second.
Motion in a second? Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Next item is discussion and information on weather-related makeup days.
Well, if you would have seen my weather forecast on Monday evening, it called for 72 and sunny, and I believe that was, it did exist, Hilo, Hawaii. I went and tried to find, find that, and it has been ridiculous here in terms of the number of weather cancellations. So, the crux of the matter, back in the spring, you approved kind of a new plan for us to take a look at this year for weather-related makeup days, which was to start utilizing staff insurors days. Well, when we did that, we were anticipating, eh, you might have four weather-related makeup days, five, maybe six is getting extreme, and you'll see in the notes I provided you, I'm starting to talk about, you know, what happens if we were to have more yet, because it is only February. So really, the first steps, the first two days, according to that plan that you passed at that time, the first two days for the students are forgiven, and the staff reports, makes, reports or makes up that time. You had allowed us to take in-service days in April and May, and we are going to do that. We are going to reassign the April and May in-service days to be makeup days. We are also, because we're at this point as well, we're going to add a makeup day on June 7th. It would be that Friday. Now, that takes care of five of the six days, so day number six. So we did the research and went out there, and, and so there's a couple of things that come into play here. One is, what does the state really require? Long ago, it was 180 student contact, I shouldn't say long ago, about four years ago, it was 180 student contact days, but they also had a minutes and hours requirement. The state has gotten rid of the contact days requirement and still has some hours and minutes requirement. And that actually never changed, the hours and minutes never changed. It's been the same hours and minutes. So we're, we're, so we actually, we're fine hours and minutes. The other piece then becomes we have, well, there's a couple of other pieces. One is, there's contract. So we have a contract with our teaching staff. They'll work 189 days a year, and I don't know student contact days or not, it's 189-day contract. It's what it is. It's, and so, you know, then we have to account for that. If we ta, take away the professional development days, we still have, that's still, there still needs to be professional development days, because that's part of that 189-day contract. One of the things we're looking at doing with those is coming up with some basically, this spring, our plan was to look at moving our curriculum into basically Google documents. And, and right now, we use two, we use two different computer services to house our curriculum. We want to pull out of those, out of those services and house it all under our Google Drive. That way, we're not paying a vendor fee to house, house what we could have on our own. Right now, we're paying a vendor fee and have been for years. We want to get away from that and do this more efficiently and make it more responsive, and move it into Drive documents that the district, you know, controls and has. That way, if those programs ever change, which we've been threatening those programs to change, then we're not beholden to those. So that's really our, our in-service plan for the spring. So we know that that will take time, and there will be, you know, in-service time dedicated toward that. It could be after-school time, it could be other time. We'll have to account for it and do that. The other piece is, you know, this is the part where it becomes, how much do we value our curriculum? We've lost six days at the moment. We have a plan for making three of those up. I think we value our curriculum, number one. That's why we're here. We value the education we provide. But then you start to weigh it. We could add a day on June 10th. Are we gaining any educational value there? And I do have, I do have a hard time saying we're going to gain a lot of educational value by adding a day on June 10th at the moment. What I would like to do, what I, what I'd like to do is move, move forward and basically say that, and we are still good in hours and minutes, and basically say that at this point forward, we'll give the students a third day. Staff will again, still have to be accountable for that time. And then after that, if we have to continue to look at any other makeup time, we would simply look at adding hours or minutes, or minutes maybe to the day, because I do value the curriculum. I think, I think everybody here values the curriculum, that's why we're here, but I don't know, again, that we gain, gain anything by bringing people back on June 10th at the moment.
No. What do you think? I think June 7 somehow gets, find a way.
Right.
Add the minutes now.
So you're saying it needs approval, not tonight though?
I...
That third day.
Well, I kind of want your thoughts on, the third day, the third day was already built into that, well, no, how do I want to say it? We're making up three, that's for sure, because that was built into what you approved back in May. Allowing the students to miss a third day or not make up a third day, or a fourth day maybe without adding minutes, that you will have to, to make a final decision on.
Are you going to...
But I do want to start getting information out to students.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I, I don't think, obviously I don't want to go past the June 7th, so, you know, given that third day is, I think, almost a given, it's, now, you have to put in this recommendation what the contingency is if we have another one, i.e. the additional minutes, or would look at that differently?
I, I think we can look at that down the road. I don't know that we have to have that answered at the moment, other than to say that that would be our next step, would be to look just at adding to our school day. I think that's far preferable than bringing...
I think that's far preferable than bringing, bringing people back for June tenth to the contact day.
How many of them will even be here?
The possibility of there being catastrophically poor attendance is really high.
Yeah, I, I already know we have, we already have students that have that planned out, and, and I, you know, it, it's, it's already there. I already know we have students who, for various reasons, will be gone, and I've already had staff, for various reasons, saying, if we go into June tenth, this, this, and this. Now, you know, first and foremost is education of the students, but, you know, I guess we need to look at, again, what are we truly gaining at that point? And I don't know that it, I don't know that there is much educational value that gets gained by going on June tenth. I would rather see us go another route. And I can, you know, we can move forward that plan, do formal approval at a later point, but, you know, at least the first three days, we know, and we can do a formal approval on that at another point.
We don't wanna add minutes on now and try to keep the last eight to six, give the teachers a seventh for in-service and?
Well, you know, at the, at this point, I hadn't really looked at that from the stand, part of adding minutes, I think you'd also limit some value there. We can add five minutes on or eight minutes on, but you're spreading now that out amongst an entire school day. I don't know that, I mean, it does gain some, it allows a bit longer class time, but I, I don't, I think it would be... We've lost so many solid days now that we need, I think we need, I think we need time, that solid time. I do think there's an extent to where that limits out, so, but, you know, we're, we've got a lot of testing yet. You know, I even look at going into these next couple of weeks. This quarter of school, we have a rotation set of classes that have given up out of their, that set of classes only meets six weeks. They've already given up six days in that six weeks. So I just think that going on that Friday is probably, allows us to spread that now amongst the rest of the year and make some of those adjustments that way with, with that. I think adding minutes probably becomes day seven and eight. But I think, I think having that third day just allows us to spread it out and get, get that curriculum in, get the testing in, get all of those things in that we need, know we need to get done.
When does summer school start, that Monday?
Will probably be starting in earnest, at least at the elementary, on that Monday. Maybe, depending, we may have to talk about that and look at a Tuesday start.
No, for starters.
So.
But.
We'll make it work.
They does, as soon as they start.
Yeah.
Well, 'cause then if we move that back, then we're talking Fourth of July.
And, and high school, and I will say, there is the caveat.
Oh, high school.
That does not affect middle school, high school, summer school. We'll start probably a bit later, and that one goes, that, that, there's a time component there that we have to deal with, so that may start a little later and go a little longer anyways, than it probably was going to anyways, so. But I can bring back to you in March, just that formal approval of, of foregoing a third day. And again, if we look at...
That's where we should start.
Yeah, having to bring it back to March.
Yeah, okay. I will put out, though, this week, that plan for these, these days, and I'll say we're anticipating that a third day will be forgiven.
Do there's some class trips leaving sometime and ended at same time?
Um, the senior class trip, I don't know, has been planned at the moment.
Is there a DC trip or something that?
Oh, there is a DC trip, yeah, that goes.
They leave that?
Off the top of my head, I do not know the exact.
Is that around Memorial Day?
No, I think they leave.
No, they leave.
It's either Thursday or Friday, don't they?
Yeah.
Seven, eight, three?
Into June?
June, seven, eighth, I think they do.
Oh, okay. I have to pull that up, yeah, and.
So the, the co-op on the, the?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to number sixteen, set, yeah, set date in time for community informational meeting for referendum.
So, the thought process would be, this would be in March, closer to that time period.
Is Wednesday the best night?
Yeah, what's the best night? Somebody's gonna not like it.
I, I... Oh, uh, you know, it could be, we could keep it Wednesday and keep it kind of consistent with when board meetings are, if that works. I don't, uh, the village board meets on Tuesdays, I think, typically.
The thirteenth would be the board meeting in March?
Yes.
Yep.
And then the twentieth is the spring break, right? So you only have the twentieth or the sixth are the only Wednesdays that'll be open.
So I would imagine we'd wanna do it on the twentieth, not before the...
Twentieth puts it two weeks out, or a week and a half out-ish.
Probably better meeting closer to the referendum date than further away.
Yeah.
Try to spur attention and, and interest. Would you like this at the twentieth then?
You're talking about like a six o'clock, maybe?
Yeah, probably either a six or a seven. We do six.
We do a little later to let people get...
Maybe, six thirty? Six thirty?
Man, if people, if they work till five thirty, it's gonna be tough to get them.
Seven?
Six thirty.
Six thirty.
Six thirty or seven?
Six thirty.
And this won't be, this isn't, this isn't in the sense of a board meeting.
Right.
But, you know, I wanted to give the board certainly a voice in setting that, and we'll, we'll post that you're all going, we'll probably do a general posting that the board may be in attendance at the meeting, but again, it's not a board meeting, so.
But we will sit out there.
Yeah, it would be informational and...
That would be, yeah?
Six thirty.
Six thirty.
Six thirty?
Six thirty and the twentieth.
Will that mean if we got more to hear?
Well, that would be my other question, would you just, would you like to hold it here, or would you prefer maybe to hold it at the middle school, high school?
Are you gonna show a slideshow?
Uh, we may have some of that.
There's some people, there's an individual meeting that night, I don't know about.
Okay, so why don't we move to the high school, and we'll find space. We've got a couple of different spaces we could host that in.
Alexander Auditorium?
We could do the Alexander Auditorium, we could do, um...
It's okay to do it. As people?
People meetings at six.
Six thirty is, is on the...
Why don't you go after them?
They might move.
Well...
This says six thirty to eight on here, for them, and granted, that's just the timeframe they use, but how long do those usually man, last?
If you're calling back, there's a, we asked them to...
We've got the band concert Monday, Tuesday, that we...
Yeah.
I think I had to move my agenda, Wednesday, Thursday.
Yeah, so if we just did...
Well, if they could go a little earlier, we could go to seven.
They might be able to move it.
You wanna go to, and I was gonna say, do you wanna just push it to seven then?
Right. Where is their meeting, is their meeting here?
Yes.
Yeah.
Then we should probably have our meeting here right after.
That's what I would say, then they have to keep them here. See, if they do five thirty to six thirty or something.
I'll talk to Jenny, I'm sure they'll...
Or they may change it to a different time.
They might change it to a different time. I'll, I'll talk to Jenny. You guys establish that and we'll work around it.
It would be kinda nice, yeah, to have the same night.
They can make that meeting shorter, too. I'll see what's on the...
To seven o'clock?
Seven o'clock, contingent on the other meeting.
And probably here, is where, we will set it here. Yep.
I, I would think.
All right. Next item, opportunity for individual board member comment. Kathy.
Well, I guess I don't really have anything this time, because we're very fortunate that we have all the wonderful people that donate things to our district.
All right. Leo.
Two things, a thank you to, to Ronnie for all of her years of service to the district. There's a person in the district whose tenure and whose consistency makes a difference, it's, it's a guidance person, somebody that the kids see in a, in a non-constructional, different light. Kudos to Ronnie and best of luck in her retirement. Secondly, I, I just would encourage the parents and citizens of the district to inform themselves of the, the status of the referendum and, and come to the meeting and make good decisions for the future of the district.
Carry.
Again, it's very nice to see the young students here, they didn't maybe talk as much as normal this time, which was a little disappointing that they didn't have more to say, but it's good that they were out there in front of them, and excellent that you also were able to bring a skills person, and it's also really good to see that type of a program where some of the kids today and in the future will, will need something of a, a more manual skills to do some trade work in their future, in a very successful future in some of those trades. And the, the demand is gonna continue to go up for those, those kids and people, so that's great to see that program. I appreciate your time and effort that you put into that.
All right, Ben.
I'll just congratulate a few, Jade Martin's here, and like she talked about, she had a thousand points. Little girl, she had fifteen hundred, I think, maybe. School record changed, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago, I think on Facebook, some of the students were in the CUSA for a couple of different events, contests. Congratulations to them, and it's nice to see kids out in the community, at different areas, putting on different events. So keep that up, and I guess thanks to the custodians and the staff for getting the buildings and everything cleaned up this morning, so that there was no question that we could have school today, so.
Thank you, Mr. Martinson.
I seen three or four of them out there this morning with shovels working, so I guess, good to, good to have them, so make sure you thank them. So I have...
All right, thank you. And I got a couple things. Just wanna mention that last month, everyone here attended the convention, minus Kathy, she couldn't make it. And they were, all the sessions were very informative. I went to some on legislative issues and referendum issues and board superintendent relationships and, and they bring some really good speakers. Every year, I'm amazed at all the wonderful speakers they have to motivate us and keep us, you know, inspired. So I like that part of it. And also, I'd just like to encourage the public to get information on the referendum and keep on top of it and go out and vote. That's all I have. So established future board meetings, March thirteenth. Is our March meeting? Do you wanna do April?
Ten.
You vote ten? All right, vote ten will be the next one. With that, call for adjournment. So move.
Second.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
We're adjourned.